I'd like to bring the meeting back to order. Can we all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a few appointments this evening, Mr. Mayor, if you'd like to come to the lectern.
Good evening, Council. As last week, I'm continuing to do appointments or reappointments, and this evening I have one reappointment, Mark Jubas. I know Mark is here. Come forward. And then, this is a reappointment to the SIR's Board. Mark has served that with very valuable assistance as he has a financial investment background. And then, we had a retirement at Eaton Corporation, who Bill Burlingame, some of you know, worked with us, Martin Luther King Task Force, and other supportive activities. So Bill has retired, and we want to continue to have Eaton Corporation represented on the City Center Advisory Board. So I'm asking you to appoint Nicholas Thornton. Nicholas is in the audience? And...
I don't see Bruce Collins. Bruce Collins, there is a...someone's term expired on the Library Board and is not going to continue to serve, so I'm appointing Bruce Collins, who's been a Southfield resident for quite a while and has an interest in libraries, to the Library Board. So I ask you for a motion to approve these appointments.
Mr. President.
Mr. Frazier. I move that we reappoint Mark Jubas to the Southfield Employee Retirement Board, appoint Nicholas Thornton to the City Center Advisory Board, and appoint Bruce Collins II to the Southfield Library Board.
Support.
The move by Mr. Frazier, supported by Mr. Brightwell, that we reappoint Mark Jubas to the Southfield Employment Retirement System Board and appoint Nicholas Thornton to City Center, as well as Bruce Collins to the Southfield Library Board. Are there any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Congratulations. We'd ask that once you gentlemen sign in, if you wouldn't mind coming up. us. Before we move to our next session, I'd like to turn the floor over to Councilman Mandelbaum.
Thank you, Council President. I know our next portion of the meeting is communications. I just wanted to apologize to all those who came out. I have to leave. I have a family obligation I must attend to, or my wife will not be very happy with me. But I did see all your concerns. If there's anything else that you need from me, please email me or contact the city clerk, and I will return your message, and we can discuss any issues further going forward.
Council would like to greet you and welcome you. Back or to the board you've been assigned to.
And again, please, I do apologize that I cannot stay any longer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mandelbaum. All right. We don't have any minutes to approve, nor consent agenda or public hearings, site plans,
Appreciate it.
so we'll be going right into communications. As people are called this evening, you do have three minutes to speak during your time. And unfortunately, our timer doesn't seem to be working right now, so I do have these very high-tech and fancy signs here I'll put up for you to let you know as your time is going down, so you'll know about where you are in terms of your presentations. And again, like Mr. Mandelbaum, we have already these concerns and so forth, but again, this is your opportunity to come present on your behalf. I do just want to say real quickly, you know, clearly, we recognize people's First Amendment rights and the ideal of freedom of speech, and we want people to be able to communicate with us and talk to us about concerns that they have. At the same time, there are limitations to every freedom that we all have. And I would just say, this is not a time to bash people and to...for name-calling and accusations of things that are not based upon any factual data and so forth. If there's something that is that you have a concern with and you can show us what your concern is about, and you have pertinent information for it, we'd appreciate that type of information. But to name-call and to make accusations of people, whether it be city employees, council members, or otherwise, or mayor, whatever the case may be, that's not really what this is designed for. So I would want to just say to everyone, as we're coming up to the lectern, that, you know, let's talk about things that are real, let's talk about things that we know and that are factual, and this council will do everything that we can do to try to meet those needs and concerns that people bring forward. So with that being said, we'll go ahead and get started, because we do have a number of requests for communications today. So first request for recognition, George Dunha. Is George here? Please come to the lectern. Again, you have three minutes.
All in business.
And please, for everyone too, please give your name and address for the record before you...as you give your comments.
My name is George Dunha. I own BP Gas Station on 29150 Northwestern Highway in Southfield. We're here, I mean, we are a bunch of us here regarding the ice chest, to remove it from the front of the gas station or the side of the gas station, and I don't see any reason for that. In order to move it, I mean, it's one of the oldest concept around, and every gas station, more convenience to everyone, and it doesn't really bother anybody. And it's something we gotta have, and our customers we gotta have, and it's very convenient for the ladies or anybody to just grab a bag and go. And we'd like you guys to compromise with us and leave us in business, because we are here to help you, and you help us. So we need your help here to leave them boxes outside, and we are a small store, and we try to make a living in that location. It's...we don't really much have room. So give us your thoughts, and try to do the best, so we can be there for you anytime you want. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next request is from Jessica Brentley. Is Jessica Brentley here? All right. Our next request is Samir Al Hassan. Again, please give your name and address for the record.
Hi. My name is Samir Al Hassan. I own the gas station at 25220 West Eight Mile. I purchased this station four years ago, and the ice chest was on the side of the station as it is now. And the previous owner told me it was sitting there for thirty years. More important, my place is small, I can't put it inside, and my customers are old, low-income. They don't have ice makers in their apartments, because they are tenants. So they have to buy it from somewhere. If I stop stealing gas, they have to cross Eight Mile and go to Redford. So we are sending Southfield residents to buy from Redford and buy at their doorsteps. It gets hard on my customers, especially the elderly, the young boys. And it is sitting there on the wall, not an ice saw. I mean, I can give you this. It is sitting there, not an ice saw. It's nice, clean, and we keep it clean, and if it gets dented, we exchange it for another one. So I don't see why the city is trying to force us to remove it. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next request for recognition is Sonia Simpson Gardner. Sonia here. Okay. Our next request is Mr. Keith Harris.
How are you guys doing today? My name is Keith Harris, All Racing Life Matter, PO Box 2769, ZIP Code 48037. You know I'm here about the septic tanks and to talk about the issues of Southfield, and I had some...I'm getting a lot of interesting help on this. Yesterday, we had a wonderful meeting with a couple of city council people. Actually, was invited to dinner with some city council people from another city, and we're gonna get a lot of help with this, but we shouldn't have to reach out like this. We should not have to reach out when we have a city council that should hear us, and not only understand hearing us, we should be able to take the light away out of this. It's not to put in an engineered system or to connect with the city, it's to replace in place. There's a big difference in $10,000 and $50,000 or $60,000. I've done a wonderful job documenting these jobs, and when people see the pictures, which I would love for you guys to come out and see some of my artwork, and see how we have documented these jobs, and what a poor job these contractors are doing, wrecking some of the properties and homes, and then the de-watering that takes up to three to six months to de-water. We have two houses in our community that can't even be de-watered. They had to backfill and, you know, quit the job. I'm talking about big contracting companies can't even do the job. I mean, all we're asking for is a little bit of compassion. Just make the people who vote for you first, and I guarantee you, you will have less problems, you will probably have a less crowded, you know, people here speaking today. We voted for you guys for a reason. You know, people are struggling today, and I think I keep pointing that out. People don't have the money. And African-American dream, you know, like for myself, is to own my home and then put my son through school. I just got my daughter through college. She just graduated with her master's at twenty-four years old. She got a master's degree. And human resources, making good money. But again, these dreams are not possible if you're putting more of a financial burden on us. I have every right, and everybody have every right, to want to put their family and own a home and put their kids through school. This is a burden. We just want you guys to hear us and show some compassion. That's all we're asking for, as the residents. So, you know, we want to work with you, so would you please take a little compassion and work with the residents? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next request for recognition is Stacy Jackson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Stacy Jackson, 21685 Rougewood Drive, Southfield, Michigan, 48033. I'm here today really just to ask what really is being done about the septic tank system situation. In 2016, when all this started up, there was talk about grants. I'm here to ask, how many among you have reached out to talk about grants? Has the city invested in hiring a grant writer, or research writer, to help secure those grant funding? I'm concerned that...we know that the council agreed unanimously to allow business owners a full ninety days to remove a recycling bin, but only allow residents on an ordinance that we did not know existed, that was not enforced, thirty days to secure certification. We have a number of residents, our business owners here, to keep a storage unit for their ice, and I would be in support of that if the city wasn't forcing thousands of Southfield residents out of their homes with this septic tank ordinance. I'm also concerned that the city has allowed a sex-dial brothel enough time to secure a hundred and eighty days of a moratorium as the city researches and investigates and find out more about it, but did not issue and has not still issued a moratorium about this septic tank issue. So now I'm left to believe that thousands of Southfield residents, our homes and our families, number one, aren't worth the same value as a recycling bin, two, that thousands of Southfield residents and our families aren't worth a bag of ice, and three, that thousands of Southfield families aren't worth the value of a plastic cat house. Now, the same way Southfield residents were told no about this septic tank is the same way the city should have blatantly told this brothel no. And on top of it, you're taking our money to find out more about it. Some of this just doesn't make sense. I think there's a flip chart here, where everything, businesses, corporations, everything is above the resident, when it really is the residents that's the backbone and the foundation of this city. You are all here for the residents. When is something going to take place about that? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next request for recognition is Pamela Gerald.
Good evening, residents at home. I've been an independent voice in the city of Southfield for about thirty-six years now. I'm here to say that I think the city requesting that these gas station owners move their ice machines from nice, neatly, and clean, displayed outside to the inside is harassment. Let me tell you why. The city has an ordinance that was put in place 12610 regarding these clothing boxes. It clearly says on number four, cannot be placed in a required vehicular parking space. You go to Tell 12 Mall, near the Jeep dealership, you've got two there. You go to Eight Mile and Beach, you've got several there. Why do we need boxes when St. Vincent's DePaul, Goodwill, Purple Heart, they pick up clothes? People are putting more than clothes in these boxes. The clothes are hanging out very nasty, and it looks horrible. Gas stations need ice, as he said. It's a big part of their retail. You've got people that don't have cards, they can't go to Meyer or Kroger's to get ice, so their local gas station in the community is where they can walk, go across the street and pick up ice. I want to know who started this, and what's the problem? Why is it such a big deal? A lot of these owners purchased these gas stations, and ice was a part of retail. Why the big change now? None of these gas station owners came and asked you for a tax abatement or Brownfield They support this city, a lot of them gave to the boy and the bear, and this is what you want to do? So I'm gonna say to all of my gas station friend owners here, whichever one of you vote for this, don't allow them to put any campaign signs in your yard. And we've got four people up for reelection, Dan Brightwell, Tanya Morris, Myron Frazier, and Furcassi. So if they vote in favor of making you move your ice machine, no more campaign signs in your yard. And I'm gonna hold all of my friends to that. No campaign signs if you make them move these ice machines. This is a sin before God, to take away their retail, and they did not come and ask for a tax abatement. This is wrong.
Our next request for recognition is Mr. Gerard Mullin.
Good evening. My name is Gerard Mullin, Southfield Citizens Oversight Committee, Post Office, Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037. Mr. Chairman, on Monday, November 26, 2018, at council's second regular meeting in November, I pointed out at that time that you folks at the previous meeting on November 19th had illegally elected Lloyd Cruz to be council president, by electing Mr. Cruz at the first regular council meeting in November, November 19th, and not at the chartered mandated second regular council meeting in November, November 26th, as prescribed by the Southfield City Charter. After my presentation, there was no response from you folks here. So I surmise that you really didn't believe me when I quoted from Section 4.1C of the Southfield City Charter, and again, I quote from the same section of the charter. "The council, at its second regular meeting in November of each year, shall elect a council president," unquote. Obviously, my proof, the Southfield City Charter, was not good enough for this council. So I went back to the drawing board, and now I have much better proof, better than the charter. How is that possible? Well, this proof is contained within the stellar pages of the November 29, 2018 issue of the Southfield Sun, the one newspaper that every Southfield resident gets a copy of for free. The Sun did an article on the council's presidential election, and I quote from the Sun. "Each year at the second regular meeting in November, the city council chooses the council president," unquote. And to top it off, adjacent to the aforementioned news article on page 13A, is a summary of the November 19th council meeting, the first meeting in November, which contains a statement that council did indeed approve Lloyd Cruz as the new council president. Doesn't get much better than that, and for me, that seals the deal. Plus, as we all know, if it's in the Sun, it must be true. Thank you.
Our next request for recognition is Eddie Fomia. Next request, Ravid. I only got a first name there. Ravid. Next request is Esran Chamlin. All right. Our next request, Saad Abou.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. How you doing? I'm not a resident of Southfield, but I own US Ice Company, I own Detroit, so I'm here on behalf, trying to help the...all the retailers in the city of Southfield and everything else, and we try to put this together and everything, to support them, because they asked me to come over here and talk on their behalf also. You know, the only thing I'm trying to say over here, I've been in the business for thirty-five years, and I think the outside boxes were out there before the inside boxes were in the gas stations. We went...we have a nice museum up here on, it shows those ice boxes been there for...I have some boxes, some eighty-five-year-old boxes and all that, that's been out there in the country that shows the outside boxes. You know, I don't understand if you want us to make sure they look good. The whole idea is to make the station look good and everything else, and I think if there is any problems, any issues with the boxes that do not look good, there's any dents on them, any rust on them, and they ask me to replace them, I replace them every single time, I want to make sure, because this represents me and represents the gas stations. I want to make sure they look good and everything else. And you know what? They are...a lot of the stations do not have any rooms to put boxes inside, and like Pamela said, it is a service to have those ice out there. If there's a power outage, it is important that we have all the ice out there, as much as we need. And in Michigan, we do have a lot of power outages, unfortunately. DTE is not helping out with that at all. Matter of fact, we supply ice boxes due to E crew when there's a power outage. They call us up, we supply them with all the outside boxes, all the locations and all that. So the outside boxes is not...should not be an issue being at those locations. If they don't look good, that is an issue. But all I'm saying is that we, you know, are you allowed to have the gas station to have an ice box out there? To maintain it, yes, all the power to that, and I have no problem with that. But it is not right to make them remove it, and they have no space. A lot of the stations are small, so if they don't have those space for them and all that, they're not gonna have room to put them in there. Like I said, as long as they look good, I will support it in every which way. You ask me whatever to do, I will make sure, I will do my job and do it right. So all I ask is to allow them to allow the boxes out there, and I appreciate your support in any way. Thank you. And I know I support you guys every which way I can, and the city of Southfield, I love it, because I lived in here for ten years, so I got no problem with it, and thank you.
Thank you. Our next request for recognition is Najib Falel. Najib Falel. All right. Our next request is Majid Garbara.
My name is...sorry. Majid Garbara, I own the station 11 at Telegraph Sanoco Station. So, I mean, I'm with the guys about the...you know, my station is small, and I can, you know, I cannot put a box inside, you know, ice box, because it's kind of, you know, it takes a lot of room. I mean, if you go to my station, it's too small. I mean, trying to squeeze as much as you could for retail or for the customers, for everything. So if you put the box inside, there's no room I put it on. And besides, where is it now? It's not bothering anybody. It's not in a parking lot, it's not in the drive, you know, walking through or anything. It's just in the safe place, and a lot of customer love it, you know, they'll come and pick it up and go. So I just don't know...I, you know, everything is okay with us. I mean, that's all I want to say, you know? If it's bothering somebody, they could have told us, but I've never heard any somebody, you know, anybody came in and said, oh, it's bothering, take it out of here. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next request for recognition is Steve Shimon. Steve Shimon. Our next request is Marvin and Habib Shimami. That's fine. Absolutely.
Hello, everyone. Hello. Habib Shimami, 12 in Evergreen. I own the two gas stations, the Shell and Stop and Go. You're very well-known. I'm gonna become famous here, televised every time I come around, so...anyways, you all know my stations. And my little store is so small, there's no way I could take that box and squeeze it anywhere, unless in the garage. If you want me to sell contaminated ice with the smoke, I will do that. I have no other choice but to keep it outside. All right? You know, we are in a nickel-and-die-and-...
And I have no problem with that. But it is not right to make them remove it. And they have no space, a lot of the stations are small. So if they don't have those space for them and all that, they're not gonna have room to put them in there. Like I said, as long as they look good, I will, you know, support it in every which way. You ask me whatever to do, I will make sure. I will do that, my job, and do it right. So all I ask is to allow them to, allow the boxes out there. And I appreciate your support in any way. Thank you. And I know I support you guys every which way I can. And the city of Southfield, I love it. Because I lived in here for 10 years. So I got no problem with it. And thank you.
Thank you.
Our next request for recognition is Najib Falel. Najib Falel. Our next request is Majid Garbara.
My name is, sorry. Majid Garbara, I own the station 11 at Telegraph Sanoco Station. So, I mean, I'm with the guys about the, you know, my station is small. And I can, you know, I cannot put a box inside, you know, ice box because it's kind of, you know, it takes a lot of room. I mean, if you go to my station, it's too small. I mean, trying to squeeze as much as you could for retail or for the customers, for everything. So if you put the box inside, there's no room I put it on. And besides, where is it now? It's not bothering anybody. It's not in a parking lot. It's not in the, you know, walking through or anything. It's just in the safe place. And a lot of customer love it. You know, they'll come and pick it up and go. So I just don't know. You know, everything is okay with us. I mean, that's all I want to say, you know? If it's bothering somebody, they could have tell us. But I never heard any, somebody, you know, anybody came in and he said, oh, it's bothering, take it out of here. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next request for recognition is Steve Shimon. Steve Shimon. Next request is Marvin and Habib Shimami. That's fine. Absolutely.
Habib Shimami, 12 in Evergreen. I own the two gas stations, the Shell and Stop and Go. You're very well-known. I, I'm gonna become famous here, televised every time I come around, so. Anyways, you all know my stations. And my little store is so small, there's no way I could take that box and squeeze it anywhere, unless in the garage. If you want me to sell contaminated ice with the smoke and, I will do that. I have no other choice but to keep it outside. All right? You know, we are in a nickel-and-die-in business here. You take the ice, you take everything else. If they need a pop, they, they need ice that goes with it. That'll go somewhere else. Now, you know there's a park across the street from me. You know how many churches, teams, little kids, they come in, they buy pop, they buy ice, and they go to the park, play baseball? Day, night, churches, schools. What are we gonna do with these people? Send them to Kroger or send them to a different city to go get ice? I mean, what's, what's wrong here? We tried to help you every time you guys need help. I understand, I got two minutes. So when you guys run for election, Habib, can we put the sign here? Habib, can we put this sign here? You know what? More than welcome, I'll let you do it all. I fought for the digital signs for years. For little things. I don't know if you guys own businesses. You need to own a business like us. And then you know what we have to go through to deal with public, to get rid of ice, or get rid of this, or get rid of that. We have no room to get rid of anything. I think this is a little bit too much, is going too far. I, I own a garage. One day, you can't put a car with no license plate. Come on. This is a garage. If you bring me a car with no license plate, I gotta take it and work on it. Now, ice boxes gotta be moved. Let's consider these things studied before you start sending letters and doing all these things. At least talk to us, let us know. I think it's getting, it's getting a little bit out of hand. And what I'm gonna do next, I'm gonna list my gas stations for sale. You know, I love the city of Southfield. But you guys pushing too much. And like she said, she took the words out of my mouth. I, I would like to know whose idea it was. Because I helped every one of you. Putting their signs, pushing their elections, hoping that you will be serving that city of Southfield. I've been a resident for 40 years. Not just own the business. My kids were born in Southfield. And I love this city because we could communicate. And I would like to do that. So thank you very much.
Our next request for recognition is Art and Samad Gapi. Art Gapi or Samad Gapi? Neither one are present. All right. All right, that concludes our communications portion of the meeting. Council.
Council President?
Yes, Mr. Fakassi.
You know, I'd like to, I'd like to make a statement, as you know, that I voted for this use of having the ice box outside. I'm very, very familiar with retail. I've had little stores all my life. I know what it is to have a little station and, and have to do things that just are impossible to do. When you look at the size of these boxes and look at the interior of these stores, they just don't fit. It would be telling people that we just cannot handle ice anymore. Is what we're really saying. And I know it's tough when you, you know, get the thing from planning and, and they come up with all these reasons why you should do away with them, that they're getting away of handicapped, all these things, which is really wrong. But I know it's hard to reverse your vote, but I'm asking you tonight to, to send it back to planning and have them look at it one more time and, and rescind this, this piece of legislation. Because it hurts a lot of small people who work very hard, long hours. And if, I know you guys and gals know these people, one or two of them. But, you know, it's, it's really a hard job. And, and they're out there working, and in the cold. And in the summertime, they got lawn guys coming there, they get a pop, go to the restroom, get gas, fill their thing with ice, and put their pop in, and, and work in neighborhoods. And they do have a service. Someone mentioned about electricity. And you know, you got the governor giving a warning now, what they had in Grand Rapids, that they got lines down now and expecting 40, 40 mile an hour winds maybe tomorrow or tonight yet. And who are you gonna be looking for? Somebody that can get you some ice and keep your food safe? So, well, I guess in the temperature outside, you throw it outside. But anyway, I'd ask that, that council look at this item and, and give relief to these people.
Thank you. Ms. Taylor?
Thank you. I just wanted to remind everybody that we will have a City of Southfield Career Fair on Tuesday, February 19th, from 10 to 3 in the pavilion. If you're looking for employment, please stop by. There will be several companies there looking for employees. And I also want to remind everyone that we are in Black History Month for the month of February. And the Parks and Rec Department have put together some wonderful, wonderful programs. And I hope you have time to stop by and see and partake of some of them. Every day or every week, there's something different going on this Friday. They'll have movie night. We also have a storyteller night on Thursday, February 28th, to culminate the whole month of February. So I hope you can enjoy some of the festivities that the Parks and Rec Department have put together for us. Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Fraser?
Yeah, I would just like to say that right after the first of the year, our county treasurer sent out a special edition of homes that were in jeopardy of being foreclosed on. And there were a number of houses in Southfield that are behind in their taxes. And it seems like every year, when the gavel falls on the foreclosure and a house is foreclosed on, we get a number of people coming to the city saying, my house got foreclosed on, I want my house back. I've got the money to pay the taxes. And what I'm, what I'm saying now is, if you're in arrears in your taxes, you should call the county tax person, Mr. Meisner's office, and work out whatever arrangements you can to maintain your house. It's, it's really tough. Because the city of Southfield does not foreclose houses. It's the city, it's the county treasurer that does the final foreclosure. So if you're in jeopardy, if you're behind in your taxes, I'm urging you to call the county treasurer and see if you can work out some kind of an arrangement so that you can keep your house. I don't want anyone to lose their house. But I do want people to pay their taxes. Taxes is what helps us be able to fix potholes and do other things that are necessary in the city. So if you're one of those people that's in that list, be warned that you should pay your taxes. Thank you.
I just have one, one statement I want to make. Last week, many people saw a news report about sex doll brothels in the city of Southfield. And I think we were, the city was kind of somewhat misrepresented in our position on that. So I just wanted to just make a statement now to everyone that's here and watching. The city did receive one telephone inquiry about an individual, from an individual last June regarding the creation of these sex doll brothels in the city. There's no application that has been submitted and no further contact has been made with the city at this point. In, in our due diligence, the city has enacted, had enacted a 100-day moratorium to allow the city's legal and planning department to conduct the appropriate research on this potential use. And a recommendation will be made to city council in the spring regarding the implications of creating a sex doll brothel in Southfield, at which time council will then take an actual vote on the issue. So we are just simply trying to cover ourselves, make sure we look at this issue from every particular angle we can before we make a, any type of knee-jerk reaction to it. And, you know, again, our idea is about what's gonna be best for the city, what's gonna be best for our business, community, and, and things of that nature. So we want to just be on record with that as well.
Yes, Mr. Brightwell?
It seem like everyone is, something to say. I, I just want to indicate that I have been in conversation with a couple of our citizens. And my colleagues know that I have a record of getting things done since I've been here. And one day I asked the group, I asked, I asked the group, can we resolve this septic tank issue in five years? I've been in conversation with a couple of citizens. And I'm gonna dedicate my time and effort to working with the couple of citizens I spoke with to see can we come to a real solid conclusion on this septic tank issue. It seemed to be something that has been out there. And I think it'd be, it'll have a consistent, on a going-forward basis, a consistent attention of minds to try to get this resolved in an equitable manner to everybody's satisfaction. Because I believe that every problem there is a solution. And since, since I've been on council, I have produced a lot of solutions to some issues that have come up. So I'm gonna make sure that my attention is put to that. With the, with the ultimate goal, saying that in five years, I want to try to have an answer to this particular issue so it was not constantly bubbling up, not to use a term there, but but, and anyway, that, that's why I promised a couple of citizens a few days ago that I would be on this. And that publicly said, to put it out there, I guess this is my commitment to honoring my words in private. Okay? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
And just one last housekeeping issue as it relates to communications for those in the future that do want to talk or have their three-minute timeframe to talk during communications. You do need to sign up the Wednesday prior to the meeting. So our next meeting, it's February 25th. So if there's anybody here or anyone listening that plans to be here that wants to give comments during communications, please make sure by, I think it's by noon on, on that Wednesday. Is that right, Madam Clerk? Yes, okay, thank you. So noon, the Wednesday before the meeting.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Just to clarify my own mind, is there nobody on this council that wants to refer this back to planning and relieve these people for something they cannot live with? These are citizens of our city, hard-working people. You all know them. You all probably get your gas at their stations. There's nothing negative about it. It's their small business people, making out a profit if they can. And, and I don't hear anybody wanting to look at this and review this again. You know, it's gonna have to take somebody who voted against it in order to bring it back up.
Yep, Mr. Fakassi. We will, Mr. Fraser, who's the chair of legislative, where this actually came out of, the recommendations, we'll review it tomorrow at noon at their next meeting. And we can discuss it at our next regularly scheduled meeting.
Mr. Mayor?
I would like to echo the sentiments of Mr. Fakassi. I think the council knows that I didn't favor an ordinance banning ice chests as long as they didn't take up a parking space and as long as they didn't block the sidewalk or handicap access to the gas station. So I also would like to see this matter reviewed. And perhaps we can come to some solution. Then picking up where Ms. Taylor left off, I want to also talk about the career fair. The city of Southfield has a whole number of positions available. Public safety positions. We're always looking for police and firefighters. And building inspectors, plan examiner, building service workers, facilities, parks and operations supervisor, and a technology service network engineer. But also, especially for the teens and parents, we are looking, starting now, it is, summer's coming, one day. And we will be hiring seasonal workers in Parks and Rec, our camp programs, and also in public works for litter pickup, lawn mowing, those kind of things. So there, now's the time to get an application in for summer employment. And lifeguards. A lifeguard only has to be 16. The other positions require somebody to be 18 years of age. And speaking of employment, one of the things, some of you are aware that we've been talking about career options for our young people coming up and that there is a shortage of skilled tradespeople. I've done some facilitating with the Southfield Public Schools and with the Oakland Community College and the Building Trades Council of Southeast Michigan. And this Thursday, the 14th, there'll be a series of, in our pavilion, a series of skilled trades. We'll have hands-on activities for students. This will be a field trip for Southfield kids to the pavilion. But more, more importantly, there are also adults that may want to think about changing careers or find employment that pays better than, as skilled trades do, than their current employment. So from 6:00 to 7:30 in the, in the pavilion on Thursday night, there is a session for adults who would like to, men and women, who would like to consider a skilled trade, getting into an apprentice program. And by the way, many of these apprentice programs are superb in that they are at no cost, other than material fees. And you are working on, on the job while going to school and making a salary. So the, all of our leading skilled trades unions in the Building Trades Council have these various centers where they're, they're looking for applicants. And then, because we don't have a, a meeting next week due to President's Day, I did want to mention that, oh, actually, it's this Saturday. We have the Meal with the Message for young men of color. And this, it's Saturday from 11:00 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. for students in grade 6 through 12. And this is part of our My Brother's Keeper initiative. We have an active chapter in Southfield. And so the topic this, this Saturday, rather, is relationships, healthy relationships. And I'm also told, because an inquiry was made, do you have to be a boy of color to attend? No, you don't. But primarily, the outreach is to young men of color. But this is Southfield. We, we welcome anybody, as long as you're 12 and in sixth grade to 12th grade for this. So once again, it includes lunch. And it's this Saturday in the Parks and Rec. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Administration?
Administration has nothing.
All right. And Madam Attorney?
We have nothing. Thank you.
Madam Clerk? Y'all making this too easy for me tonight. We do have one meeting we need to schedule, we talked about earlier, for our retreat. That we agreed on the date of March, of March 1st, from 12:00 to 4:00 o'clock. So we need a motion to set that date.
Mr. Chair? I make a motion that we set the date of March 1, 2019, from 12:00 noon to 4:00 p.m. as the date and time of our retreat.
Location to be determined.
Location to be determined.
Support? All right, they're moved by Mr. Brightwell. Support by Mr. Fraser. That we set a date for retreat, council retreat, March 1st, from 12:00 to 4:00, location to be determined. All those in favor? Aye. Are there any opposed? All right, thank you. All right, we don't have any ordinance left. If there's not anything else, you can adjourn.
You adjourned?